Are we all ready? Would you join me in the pledge of the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Full reading go order.
Hey Gary. We got a full long drive here from the county.
We need the motion to approve the agenda presented.
I'll make that motion.
With the addition of Mike Graves, wasn't correct. Has that become the official address?
Yes, the official address, yes.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes of the August 11th council meeting and August 21st public hearing official minutes.
I move we accept the minutes for August 11th and the budget meeting on whatever date it was.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, yes. That's right.
I'll second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Sheriff to report.
Well, we have a total of $269,629.22 in all funds. We made a large payment to Fritzens on this month for the parts for the water and sewer installations that were done. We also paid to have the street cut on Culbessac Avenue for that installation and for backhoe assistance to install the water sewer at that residence on Culbessac Avenue. And we paid Presmokeage for the additional help on preparing for the audit.
So where are we at on that then? Are we another year, couple of years down yet or?
Well, that work that we paid them for was preparing to do the two years audits that you agreed and signed the letter to move forward. And I have a report on my.
That's eight months.
Okay. Well, I move that we accept the treasurer's report as presented and pay the bills.
Can I second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Reports, council. You got anything else?
Of course, I always have something. We're purchasing a small laptop to real cheap from the recycling place to use as a secondary input device in the office, 120 bucks. We checked leaks this week. We got our first section done between a set of valves and no leaks on a section so far. Just below your place, Mike, down to Ponderosa. We're going to do the top part, but we had a ran out of time and had some problems with notification.
I thought we were going to start at his place.
At the top.
At the top, yeah.
Jason said that he did start on the top on one side.
Right.
The other side valve needs to be repaired so that the shut-off can be done.
Right. And we need to, if we get too many, we got to notify an hour early. If we could do three, four and just knock on their doors, but when you get a dozen, it gets a little more complicated.
To notify.
And what's the status on the tank cleaning? Is that going to happen soon? Did we ever get a date on that? I didn't see anything.
I made contact today because, you know, in all the discussion we've been having, it looks like they haven't contacted us yet with a date. And so I will hopefully hear tomorrow some information and get that scheduled. What they're doing is as in the letter that you reviewed, that their scheduling is at the same time they're doing other people in the area.
But you haven't got a date.
We don't have a date.
Okay. And I got a call from Pete Gertson, and he's checking through on our Jake break status. And since the sheriff is here, I'll just ask quick. Hi. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Anything you don't want to refer anybody?
Nothing to report.
I have a report. I wanted to bring up to the mayor and the council that our next council meeting falls on a observed holiday. And the city ordinance provides for this in which states that the council shall meet on the Tuesday following the holiday, when the second Monday is a holiday. And the date of that meeting would be October 14th. I can get the calendar down if you'd like to look at it. But could you make a note of that, that we'll be meeting on Tuesday, October 14th?
And real quick, did Pete call you on that? He said he talked to you.
Yeah, yeah, especially. On our billing program for the city, the DOS billing program has been reconstructed and we were able to process the audit bills in time for the billing at the end of the month of August. On the audit, Presmokeage will be coming out tomorrow and Thursday to do the audits for 2010 and 2011. On street signs, 15 mile per hour speed limit signs have been purchased. We purchased them and some posts, we're putting them in, some additional posts. And the custom no parking fire lane sign is being designed and will be ordered. The design is coming in just like the picture that we saw from the New York company. I think it'll work out quite well. We had a bit of a problem with the freight company delivering our signs. We probably would have had them today if they had brought it to our address. But they were shipped to us and they were delivered to Kenworth up on Spiral Highway in Lewiston. So we're working on.
My grandson was there, or is it somebody I can say he could bring them?
Really, seriously? Maybe we could do that. That might be quicker than working with the freight company to go back and get them and actually deliver them to us.
Okay.
So let's talk after meeting and then I'll coordinate with my contact.
Okay.
Great. And then I want you to know that City Hall continues to receive public records requests. They also received agenda requests for this meeting. And one of the requests is not on the agenda because we're advised by our insurance carrier and the city attorney that we cannot discuss the agenda requests regarding the water situation in August while we have an ongoing claim. That's something that, you know, can get on the agenda once the claims are closed, but we can't discuss it at that time. Sometimes a citizen doesn't understand that, but this is what we can do at a later time, but not tonight. And that's it for the first report.
Is there anything on maintenance?
I have a maintenance report. Herman Smith is out with the flu, viral flu or something. And I have his written report that I can present. We had a clean water sample for August. And as Bill said, they started flushing and checking the pressure, the fire hydrants on Ponderosa Loop, both high drive and lodge pole, and then did the one pressure check. They had a pressure reducing valve failure that caused a high pressure down the main street and caused some problems, which we really can't discuss further because of some of the insurance claims on that. And they're reporting that they did a water and sewer install on Culbessac Avenue, as we had discussed previously what happened. And it has been installed and hooked up. And they had a leak in the lagoons, a T came apart, and when they dug down to fix it, they saw there wasn't even any glue on it. But they fixed that problem. They also, in this month, replaced the copper shatter up on Tiffany Lane that had been run over and broken by a garage truck. And they also have replaced a water meter at Main. And then Tom Clarkman came out and did a repair job for the city at the lagoons on the dozing weir to the chlorine contact chamber. And that's a maintenance report.
Fire department?
Yes, sir. We had a clean fire month.
Yay!
Everybody was quiet. We were good with that. Our new brush rig that we talked about last month is in service. We have it here at the city now. It's parked down behind the quick response unit building. And it's a pretty dandy one for us. It's going to do a good job. It's going to be one that's be a little quicker to move and get out on the fires and such. So I think we've done well. One thing that the firefighters, we talked about at the last fire meeting, was the possibility of maybe installing a structure or something down behind the QRU building where we could protect that vehicle from the weather. It sits out there just like the Chevy did, and it just deteriorates pretty bad. So I just thought I'd bring it up to the council, maybe research and see what you think, you know, if that'd be a possibility. Otherwise, setting out in the weather, it just tends to deteriorate pretty bad with the heat and the sun.
How much of a budget have we got there?
Fire?
There's tons of them.
I didn't bring them.
Last night's, we went and grabbed them.
Is there a way to, I just wanted to add on to the back of the QRU and use that as a basic lean-to?
We talked about that bill, and I think that's a good option.
That would make it a lot cheaper.
We'd have to do a roof and two sides. I mean, and we could do a lean-to roof and two sides, make it out of metal, so it's decent, you know, and it's a good job. But I don't see any reason why not to use the backside of the building.
Is there a tree there or something? Tree there, if I remember, or did those?
There was a tree on the side of the building. And that wouldn't work for us, but that would still put it back out of the way so we don't have, you know, people doing damage to like the one that we had before and still give us some protection. Again, wintertime, we'd have to drain it, but it'd still be out of the weather there. So it's just something to think about. I know, I don't think there's an issue with the QRU doing that because that truck could roll at any time to help us on a vehicle crash or anything. So it's, I think it's a win-win situation. I know, I can't ask you to talk about it tonight because I wasn't on the agenda, but I just, you know, if you guys would just mull over and think about it and let us know.
Well, Will Anderson's cousin, he works on buildings and he gets their scrap stuff, what's left over, really cheap. I mean, we don't care what color or what do we?
Well, no, I guess not back there, as long as, as long as it's structurally sound. I know somebody was saying, let's just get a metal frame and put a tarp over it. Well, tarts get bad in weather. We need to have some kind of protection, but yeah, if it was, I mean, I don't see why not.
We need a building permit for that?
Probably.
Well, it's a building after all.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't mind if we used the fire funds to do that, would you? You think we're, you got something else you think we would need?
I have a choice.
Well, we're a little tight on other issues this year, that we get through a lot of.
No, I mean, we're asking for this for protection of our vehicles and if that's what we need to do, that's what we need to do. So I don't think there's an issue with that. The fire, that on fire meeting, that was never discussed, that whether we would take it out of there, but I thought that's where we come.
Yeah, that's my assumption too, but you do need certain equipment too.
Well, we've got us a good truck now and it runs good. And matter of fact, all the guys have now been trained on it at our last fire meeting and it's going to do a good job for us. Just something to think about and then you can let me know what the decision will be.
Could you give us some dimensions of what size of building we need?
Gary.
Just look it over.
Yeah, I can do, I can make sure the truck.
Measure the existing building, make it same width.
Well, you could do that if you did that, that would be a very good size. Yeah. I'll list some measurements and get to you and see what you guys say. Because we'll have to have that if we get, have to get it prepared anyway, so.
Yeah, you'll have to have it.
So we'll list some measuring and see what we can do to come up. Well, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up if that's what we're just kind of looking at.
I think it's a good idea.
I think it'd be a win-win for everybody, so.
You know, we got to have Mr. Johnson here with the hazards thing from the state. I don't know.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah. You would want to be a center connected.
I happen to know him.
Oh, okay. Well, I just didn't know whether you had a chance to read it.
Anyway, that was all the fire department, you know, what we had. I can say it's been a good, good month. Things are settling down a little bit. Fortunately, we still have a ban on fires, fire burning in the area yet until the tribe deems it okay. So it's been pretty good for us. We haven't had, we've had some fires, but not a lot since the major ones.
They probably won't live that until a snow flies.
I actually have a cat that can burn myself.
I'm sure, most people do that live out.
Yes, no, you're probably right. Kathy, you're probably right. Again, just one other thing, and well, everything, as the council, as I've mentioned in the past, you guys have been great for us, for the fire department, and I appreciate it. Kathy gets on the phone every, every month and calls out our people for training and, you know, and look for fire calls. So again, the fire department really appreciates that, all your help.
And we beat the county to the one fire over there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we did have the fire. We had a fire out in the county and our city people took the county truck. It was approximately two and a half, three miles from here on a treacherous little driveway. We had a possible structures involved, but it got into the trees and such. And our gentleman, very professional, got our truck there, started fighting fire. Choppers came in, dropped water, did the whole thing and started doing the cleanup work and our guys got to go home. So, but they did a heck of a job.
Was that last month or this month?
It was this month.
Oh, I thought you said we had a clean bill.
Well, but it's a clean bill for the city.
Oh.
I can't say that for the county. That's, that's all we have for the fire department.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sheriff's Department, glad to see you here.
Yeah.
Have you anything to report?
No, just here, if I have time after everybody's done, if I can talk. Have somebody to introduce to you guys.
This would be.
Want to do it now?
What's that?
This is your time.
You're on the agenda.
You're on the agenda.
Well, actually.
Good night, Gary.
Gary.
There you go. Oh, this is when you're introducing your badge check. Oh, hell's okay.
We'll just leave them now.
Only guy who took your fire out there.
Yeah, I guess we're out of here too. No, first of all, I have to apologize. I have no excuse. Mike, I was talking with the lieutenant that we just promoted, Eric Glenn. You never know how bad something's broke till you're sitting in the driver's seat. Then you realize how bad it is broke and it's not running right. As far as not making the meetings, our main agenda was getting our jail fixed. We were understaffed. So there's a liability issue of safety for inmates as well as people that are working there. Idaho Jail Standards did a survey. They said that we needed 29 people. So telling the taxpayers that we're going to increase everybody's taxes to cover 29 people was totally ridiculous and not feasible. So it took us eight months of planning to get this through to the commissioners and everything, to where we settled on six. We structured our shift work from 10-hour shifts to 12-hour shifts and four different teams with two 10-hour shifts. So we have 33 people currently working in the jail and we're making it work. So there's a lot of things that I said I was going to do once I got in office, such as meeting with communities and finding out the different things. Well, I am lacking on that. Not going back on my word, but you know, this is the thing that we got to focus on first with this jail and patrol. And I know the communication between the outlawing areas and the sheriff's office has kind of deteriorated. We have a new lieutenant, Eric Glenn, that just was promoted on the 24th. So with that being said, is that there's going to be a representative one way or another, be it him, myself, or somebody from our staff is going to start manning these different council meetings. I've come to an understanding there has been some problems here during your guys' city council meetings. I'm hearing it. And I'm here basically to say that that is not going to be tolerated anymore. I mean, this is adults, business, meaning that it has to be constructive with people in the community to come here and be able to voice their opinion, not a screaming yelling match and something that you would see on a playground. And I am not going to tolerate it. So somebody from our office will be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, but anyways, I would like to introduce Lieutenant Eric Glenn to you guys, some of you know him, some of you may not know him. So it's up to him.
What's the last name again?
Blinn.
Glenn?
Blinn. B-L-I-N-N.
Oh, okay.
I've dealt with you before with your apartment building, so.
Oh, I do have an issue. I'm in the middle of down.
I did it.
And he's probably too new to have this?
Probably. It's, I have a huge stack of them and my secretary goes, what do you do? And I constantly, people are in my office, I have an open door policy at the sheriff's office. If anybody's in town, they stop in, they want to talk to me. I stop doing what I'm doing and I take the time to listen to what people have to say. I mean, I'm not going to be one of those people that I'm going to shut you that I'm too busy, even though I just put everything aside, let's talk. And I think you've been to my office before and we can talk. So I don't have a problem stopping what I'm doing unless it's an emergency that I'll take time to talk to people. You guys are the ones that elected me and you put faith in me to spend your tax dollars wisely, and that's what we're doing.
Speaking of tax dollars, how come property taxes going up 3% or something, Lewiston? Or is that county?
I kind of saw that too. We were at the budget hearing, we were doing, and don't quote me on this in prison, probably going to say it all wrong. I was there at the budget hearing with all the elective officials and basically we have to come up with $2 million on the jail levy this year and then it drops down to $600,000. Even though we're almost done with that, we're not relying on the taxes of the people on the properties. So I mean, I couldn't honestly sit down here and say, this is why it's happening. Because if I did, I'd be lying to you and I'm not.
So you're saying none of that raises, and you made yours work without raises or going somewhere else, and it was nothing to do with the jail?
Yeah.
As far as you know, but wage increases, of course.
No, but this is kind of what happened. We had our jail captain retire. I promoted the lieutenant to the captain, didn't pay him what the previous captain was making, didn't fulfill the lieutenant position, did some shuffling and restructuring in command over there, and it's savings over $100,000 to taxpayers. And that's what we're doing is we're looking at, how can we continue to do our job just as efficient, if not better, without asking taxpayers, we want more money.
Yeah, because it didn't go so good, over so good in the Sooton County.
No, there's a big law. I don't read the paper. I want to get involved. Right now, that election, I am staying completely away from it. Any 509 numbers that come in, I usually let it go to my voicemail. No, I'm just kidding.
I'd like to kind of turn this around because I've heard comments from, I don't know where they came from, but it's got to be pretty frustrating for you, some of the constant repeats you get with domestic violence and these arguments. And you got to run all the way out here and do an hour trip to get out here, which I'm responsible for some of them. Or I should say my residents. Is there any way we can turn this around and help you in any way?
We're looking, we need the community to get back involved and build trust with us. And that's kind of, we're not asking you to put on a badge and a gun and do our job.
No, I don't.
But I mean, we need that community to get back involved. I mean, you hear of the different things such as, well, this person here deals drugs all the time, why don't you catch them? Well, if people in the community are seeing this, instead of confronting them, why don't you write down license plate numbers? You know, we're working close with Idaho State Police Drug Task Force. I do, I still work some of the cases or I pawn them off, you know? But that's one thing that I've talked to Mel many of times that I need to get working on is that we need to get a grant for Nesspris County to start our own drug program. And with the, with the grant, and the government is, as everybody knows, is getting really tight and Mel can attest to it. I mean, you know, we're squeezing and there's nothing coming out. But if we can get a little bit of a grant, one of the grants I was focused on was a million dollar drug grant that would pay for the officers, the canines, the vehicles. It would be directed just to that, you know, portion of it, of people that we're hiring that are overtime and everything like that. But I mean, in the meantime, we talked about this, you write down your list that you're going to work on, but then you got to make another list because the things on this list fell over to this one. And then you have a third list that kind of leads over, so we're doing a lot of things. And with this new patrol lieutenant being in position, I think that this is going to serve the sheriff's office as well as the community 110 percent.
I noticed that from my experience is that some people tend to call cops for every two seconds for the most minor stuff. And you really get tired of that. So you got to send a guy out here and it doesn't prove a thing. It was totally meaningless. And I know it's not just my tenants, but I know it's happened around town here and there. There's a certain point, you try to encourage them to be a little more responsible before they, is it a real necessity to call the police?
Here's the way I look at this. Everybody makes this complaint or everybody says, you know, why aren't you doing this or why aren't you doing that? The way I look at this, and I believe it myself, and I tell all the guys that work for the sheriff's office, is that everybody we come in contact with, if they're a taxpayer, they pay our wages. So would you yell at your boss in any way or treat him any different? The way I look at it, you got to treat everybody the same. Everybody's equal. Doesn't matter if you're someone in a fancy house or someone that doesn't have a fancy house. Everybody's treated the same. Because if they pay taxes, they pay our wages.
Well, we'll try to get people to help get some more evidence for you. Everybody complains terrible things are going on, but nobody ever supports it.
But you know, I've been one who called the sheriff's office before and been thoroughly criticized.
Well, I've had some that call them every day because they yell, somebody yelled at them.
The attitude of the citizens, some of the citizens of Culbessac. It's the, uh, attitude of the citizens, some of the citizens I've helped with that, that say, "The last thing you ever do to this town is call it out," and that's wrong.
That's wrong. I agree with that.
I do see you guys a lot more than we, what we used to, so I do appreciate that, because the juvenile problem has really, from my point of view, gone down.
It has.
We could use some help with actual trolling on the weekend, sure.
Okay.
I mean, we got kids up there going around south of that patio of the cars, and playing their games up there on the sidewalk, and if somebody gets hurt, the children's gonna get hurt.
Exactly.
You know, it's part of the problem.
Yeah, I don't see that. I don't see that, so...
Yeah, I go down in the water twice, three times a week.
You know, when I worked the road years ago, um, I dealt with the trailer park up on St. Rose, and I did a lot of photographs, I was, my life was threatened at that time by the individual that owns it, um, and I explained to him very candid and professional, "I'm only trained to work one way, and if you wanna do what you wanna do, so be it, and when it's done, it's done." But, the problem is that, like I explained, it's a fire hazard. You have all of these homes built so close together, or stored so close together, you have extension cords running out of every camper into one power...
We got rid of that.
We got rid of it.
Yeah, have you been on...
Took us a year to do it, we got...
I have not.
We, we are working, we are working on that.
Those trailers are gone.
And I mean, it took a solid two months of working on that, a lot.
And the council over a year. But because of your reports, they took action.
Okay. Well, thank you for doing that.
And we cleaned up another mess over in that area, we won't mention it directly, but it's, one at a time, and each one of them costs us a thousand bucks by the time we get through a lawyer, but it's worth it, it's making a difference, people are cleaning.
I mean, you, you have a brand-new fire hydrant right there, but I mean, if it caught on fire, the wind blew just right, you're not gonna get to that fire hydrant. Not in that trailer park, the way it was. So I wanna say thank you very much to everyone that was...
Well, it's probably not, I mean, it's better than it was, it's not perfect, it's not what we would like, but it is definitely better than what it is.
I think it's still on our agenda.
Yeah, we, it's an ongoing thing on the agenda, I look to see if it was on there, and I don't see it.
Yes, E.
It is, E?
So it's...
It is on there.
Update, additional discussion of...
And you should share with him the other, um, change out in Culbissac, I don't know if you've heard of the Culbissac, the youth program, that we had a citizen volunteer to, um, work with the youth in our town, and he's been doing Saturday night sports with the youth here at the community center, so we utilized in our community center with the youth and, um, to give them activities, and he's been, um, yeah, doing great things, and I think that really has helped with the youth problems, is having that.
I've been approached by some of the businesspeople in the Lewiston area and outside the Lewiston area, they would like to see a scare-straight program. I have to get it cleared through, are legal to get it done. We already have people that are involved in the training that will come and assist, it's just where we put them at within the jail, they, they can't be exposed to the population inside, so we have a holding cell, and we, we're bringing in transports to be booked in, it holds approximately 40 inmates, and we're, we'll get a small group, start there, and then work bigger. Um, as everybody knows, the youth, "You can't touch me, you can't do this, you can't do that," we won't get into physically touching anybody or anything like that, but with some of the people that we're gonna bring in that have done time, that are trying to turn these kids around, um, what we're looking at doing is we'll have them all lined out, everybody can do their smart aleck comments, and then we're pulling out all the handcuffs and intermittently handcuffing these kids and these people in between them.
That is very good.
I think that's gonna be fun.
Fun?
Yeah, that'll be fun.
But I mean, we, we are working on the youth as a generation that's gonna take care of us.
Oh, they're so messed up.
You know, unless you have an Xbox on your lawn mower, you're not gonna get them in the lawn mower yard.
Interesting observation.
True.
Xbox. Well, Greg, appreciate the input.
You had quite a report.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, like I said, I, I, there's no excuse of not being here in a year and a half, but being focused on the sheriff's office, somebody ultimately had to pay the price of not having me there. Um, we got involved in a big cleanup in Waha, um, back in May where the trash and the litter, and, so we had a lot of people in the community come together, and we took out a dump truck full of trash in one day, and we still didn't even get all of it.
Well, Greg, before you leave, you better have one of Omar's yummy friends.
I'm watching my figure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was great, I really, that's wonderful, I'm excited about some of those things coming up.
Well, in your report, you said, "I'm gonna ask the sheriff about," what was that?
That was...
Oh, uh, the jake breaks, uh, I guess the county hadn't done anything about it.
Well, here's the, here's the problem, that's a state highway.
Yeah.
It has to go through Idaho State Police and Idaho Department of Transportation.
It already has.
And have the place that signs up?
Bob Tippett is sitting there saying, "We need a survey, and we need to know who's gonna pay for it." And, you know, it really makes me angry because of the fact that we're in Nessprish County, there's a state highway, and Nessprish County, if there's a, if there's a fee due, fee due, Nessprish County should be paying. We pay our taxes, they should pay for their...
And what's the cost of putting up a...
What's the sense of the survey?
Survey, that's more expensive than putting a sign on.
The survey is, uh, along state highways, we have a sight, line sight vision deal, and then specific offsets, and until that's done, you can't put any signage in. So we gotta get a hold of Tippett and get him, convince him that Nessprish County's gonna pay for that thing.
'Cause other towns have them.
Exactly.
I've seen them all over.
I see they're in...
Lapoye and Lewiston's got them, have they ever...
Gun Club? I think there's, well, there's speed, but I'm not sure about exhaust brakes. I will talk to Bob tomorrow.
Will you?
Uh, well...
'Cause I tried, I tried, I tried to him twice, and the second time I followed in my lapoye message, he had some problems with it.
I will take care of that tomorrow morning.
Yeah, and that, to me, the evening's lost you both.
Well, and, you know, and that's the whole thing, I explain to these guys, and I don't know if Mel's heard, some of our meetings at the commissioners, we're, we're kinda like, the joke is that myself and Scott Wilson is the chief deputy, is that, we're the pot stirrers, we, we don't take no for an answer, um, we're not here to tell people what they wanna hear, I'm here to tell you the truth, and I will talk to Bob tomorrow to figure out what we're gonna do. Because my understanding, they talked to me about it, and I go, "It's a state highway with Idaho State Police," and...
Well, you were there then, I mean, we, we, you're concerned with the Long Chastor Highway, and, you know, we're not concerned about that, you know, we've been totally brutalized by the truckers this last summer, you know, since that article came out in the news, they totally brutalized.
They toot the horn. Yeah, it's, it's not the long-haul truckers, it's the grain haulers, the local, grain haulers, chip haulers, loggers.
You see white-hot trucks, choppin' trucks all over there, and I'm like freight trains, man. They were like freight trains.
Uh, I would work it on, we're gonna put a "Welcome to Culbissac" sign on the uphill entrance, and it's 75 feet off highway, and it's in the city limits, so the guy up in Craigmont who works for the state highway, I forgot his name, he, he thinks it's gonna be pretty simple to do, and I just mentioned the jake break, and he says they have one in Craigmont, they haven't given a ticket out on it in 10 years, so it's kind of a waste of time.
Well, we got a sheriff that's gonna import it.
But they're, you know, I think a couple of times they'll slow down a little.
Then my spare time.
Are you a trucker, Mike? You used to drive truck a lot?
I locally heavy equipment.
Oh, yeah, well, I probably don't like not having a jake brake handy.
Oh, well, with your equipment, you don't need jake brakes.
Right, but the old one is...
There's a few modifications you don't need, but some of those guys just fall in love with that noise, man.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, technically, if you're, if your haul load's so, so heavy like these grain trucks, you're not supposed to get in high gear coming off that hill than you would climb it, technically.
Yeah.
That's right. And, uh, so they gotta climb a full load up that hill, it'll be about third high, four high if you were transmission, they, they haul off that hill, I, when they hit these flats down here, my wife's always been head-on a couple times turning it in. They just haul the freight. We got people passing down the right-hand side 'cause they don't have patience enough, pushing over the highway. Seriously, we've seen that a couple times. And scared me is, this guy's going by our, on the right-hand side, passed about five tards, because we got farmer equipment up ahead of us, he'd do it about 70, if he just threw anybody in the other lane, we'd have a train wreck. But that's really, you know, idiots, these guys are, you know, they get me everywhere all the time.
The state rules, there's no way that the idiot proof rule, the state rules gotta be involved somewhere.
And one last headache is, why is it 25 miles an hour for that flat straightaway on top of the hill, you know how many people have gotten tickets there?
He's laughing.
I've been wondering that, I...
It's, it's kind of embarrassing that you people get a good chunk of money taken out of their pocket going 40 miles an hour. I know several citizens here are rather upset, I don't know why.
This is what I was told, is that due to the depth of the asphalt and the heat in the summertime, when you're, the torque from a bigger engine or anything that you're going faster, that road cannot handle it.
Oh.
So it starts settling at higher speeds and moving, and then when you hit the brakes, it starts shoving all of that asphalt in.
Like our bridge.
Like our bridge.
And that's, that's why it's 25.
Oh. Okay, well, I just had to mention, I promised I would when I had a chance, sorry, my, I just had to mention that.
Working the graveyard, I did it many a times, and it is painful.
Very painful, very painful.
What is?
Driving on a public freeway, 25 miles an hour. It's almost, it all used to be gravel. It was paved, just past the two county commissioners' houses, that just was gravel all the way.
I don't even get it.
Well, when they did, see, I used to work up Craigmont, and save amount of time coming this way, or go up Rubens Gifford Road, I lived over there about two miles above Myrtle. During the winter, uh, you couldn't go that way because the press rocks were sharp, everybody, the tighter people knew where you lived because of the stress of the press rocks, so you'd come this way. But they slowed way down on the pavement, 'cause they, it was a kind of a minimum paid job.
Oh, okay.
So just wanted to go a little bit.
Thank you for allowing us to carry on. Interesting.
Don't force that speed.
So we're down to do business.
Um, new business, yeah.
Yeah, we're down to do business.
Okay, we'll move on to new business, and thank you. Uh, Mel, I guess you're next.
Hey, members of the council, my name is Mel Johnston, the emergency manager for Nessprish County, and, uh, I think the last time I was here was, maybe it been two or three years ago. Uh, one of the things that we do every five years, uh, we do a variety of plans that are disaster-related, every five years, we update the hazard mitigation plan, and what the hazard mitigation plan is, it's a plan that looks in depth at what are the hazards facing the county, and what are some measures we can do to reduce the impact of future disasters. And we do take it down, not just from the county's perspective, but then we fine-turn it down to the communities themselves, so we have a different picture for Culbissac than we do for PEC, than we do for Lapoye, than we do for Lewiston, okay? Because the threats are different, you have different concerns. PEC has, for example, has a pretty significant flooding threat, uh, based on past events with Big Candy Creek, uh, but in Culbissac, of course, we've got a fairly pretty dyke system with levies from the Corps of Engineers, uh, that you guys maintain, and it's stood the test of time very well. We've had a couple threats in terms of potential for Inchester Dam every now and then, if we get a curious combination of weather, uh, lots of threats there, but basically, the levies here in Culbissac are very good, and they operate at design. So the threats are different from PEC, are different from Lewiston, so we try to take the look and swoop down that part. Uh, for the revision of this plan, again, we do it every five years, I took a fresh look with the people involved with the hazard analysis, uh, at what are the current hazards, and they're pretty much the same as they were before, just updated information, for example, uh, we have, uh, severe thunderstorms in, uh, April 2011, we had the, the real heavy storm that took out a lot of roads along Mission Creek and Lapoye Drainage, the results of the time of emergency damage, kind of, I'm not sure, again, uh, that was 2011, that was a presidential disaster declaration, so we got the roads repaired, uh, it only cost us, what the taxpayers, 10% of the total cost, it was quite a hefty bill. Uh, that was 2011, and of course, another threat is, uh, modern land fires, that's our number three, uh, hazard, and of course, in 2007, we had a chimney rock fire near Waha, and of course, you're all familiar with if you looked outside, it was all smoke from the, uh, Big Coog, Big Cougar Fire, this last summer, I think that thing ended up going 65,000 acres before it was done, uh, but it was very well managed, uh, and despite the efforts, uh, of the firefighters and the incident command team and other sheriff's offices involved in warning people, telling them to evacuate, you know, uh, we did lose some structures, but, uh, and a lot of them were fishing game structures, there were a couple structures lost on the Snake River. Uh, what that drives home to me is the importance of having those fire-wise, uh, measures put in place, like some clear area around your home, uh, especially in an example like that, uh, where there's no roads, we can't get a fire department in there. It does make sense that, you know, hey, I better have some area cleared around my house, so if a big one comes, you know, there's only so much you can do as, in terms of firefighting. But unfortunately, we did lose a couple of structures, but that's, that's basically, uh, it has analysis, we updated it, uh, the study last May, and kept on updating it when we hit the fires. And we did look at Culbissac, and, uh, looking at it from the last time we did this, not much change in terms of the threats, and what I, what I would ask you to do, if you all got a copy of this, yes, that's the one, is to, if there's any, if you, based on your experience here, if, if you think that some of these ratings need to be changed, uh, if you could, uh, contact me, and I'll give the information to the ring, the ring with no ring, or the, uh, if you have any, any changes you'd like to see on this, I know, it, looking at the historical data since we did our last update, I didn't notice any significant changes that affect Culbissac directly, again, the big thing was in 2011, we had that, uh, severe thunderstorm, but I, I think that's pretty much in tune here, it happens every maybe five or six years, where we get one of these things that dump down like that. Uh, the time before, we had one that affected Garden Falls and Hubbard Falls, that was a pretty severe thunderstorm, so they do happen to us every now and then, that's why it's on the hazard list, so again, if you'd like to have any changes made, please, uh, see the ring with the contact information, and we'll get that changed.
And it's pretty much these two pages in your report now.
Right. And, and the last thing that, that's changed since the last time we did is, uh, this page here that talks about the community vulnerability characteristics, this page here, and, uh, I went to the assessor's office and, and, and said, "Okay, what's, what's changed in Culbissac?" And you've, you've got a few more structures, and as the value of the assessed value of your property's gone up, which pretty much is a nationwide trend for property value increase, uh, it's gone up too, okay? So, uh, the latest data as of three or four weeks ago shows 178 structures... So the latest data as of three or four weeks ago shows a hundred and seventy-eight structures inside the siblings of Culbysack. Average value is forty-four thousand three dollars. And of course, that's a structure, a structure is anything from a very, very large fancy house to, you know, shit.
A beautiful hotel downtown.
Good, good. So that's the basic process. Just, the main thing I'm gonna do tonight was to kind of just review those hazards and update you on the things that we had seen changed again. Small stream flooding, no change there. Just a couple of severe thunderstorms that we've had since the last time we met five years ago on this particular topic. And of course, the update on the wildland fires of the big cougar fire this last summer. Everything else is pretty much unchanged in hazard analysis. And again, if you see anything that you'd like to modify in terms of the ratings of that, please send me the information. And the next time we get together, yes?
Don't be interrupting. I'd like to know, how do you check the levees? How the levees are checked?
Oh, the levees are checked by, depends on who owns them, okay? The levees are checked by, they're checked by the Corps of Engineers.
Are they drilled?
I don't know. I know one thing they check for is vegetation.
They, my understanding is that they walk the levee and look at the vegetation. And since I'm up against the levee, they look at if we've got, what we've got in our yards growing up against the levee and stuff.
I think we have an inspection every year or twice a year.
We have, I think we have twice a year.
I think it's once a year. And again, because of rules, they do physically amount them all on. Because you guys own the levee here for the city, Culbysack. Nesperse County owns the levees at PEC and Sweetwater, as well as the flood protection device, which is not technically a levee at Canyon Creek. Okay? We have those and our road department is responsible for those. And the road department, myself and the commissioner go walk Lewis levees with the Corps of Engineer inspectors every year. And their usual complaint is vegetation that's in excess of like four inches of amber on a tree and stuff like that. And their concern is that the roots of tree are gonna go deep down and weaken the integrity of the levee. So you have that on one hand. On the other hand, you have the fish people saying, oh, do not cut down those trees, they provide valuable shade and keeps the temperature cool for these streams. You've got two federal agencies, one's saying cut down the trees, the other's saying leave the trees there. And even though they're paid way too much, they can't seem to resolve the difference and come up with an answer. Now, we just Nesperse County nationwide, we can't answer. So what they do is they say it's not our problem to resolve, we fix it in the local level. There is no fix, definitely. And it has to come from above or it's not gonna come at all. So every year, we are satisfactory, we're not exceptional. And that may be the case with you guys, and you have inspections too. You probably don't get the highest rating, but you're still acceptable in terms of, it's acceptable to the Corps of Engineers standards, so that if it's damaged, they will come and repair the damage since they were the ones that constructed initially before they turned it over. Is that, is that pretty much your inspection school?
Yeah.
That's the way ours is.
Pretty much. The cops say all these citizens planted their trees in the levee. This is no good, you know, but they don't do anything.
Right. But still, even, but still, it's...
I have a tree. I have a levee and I have the trees.
We'll pay for that. Yes.
We haven't made you cut it down.
That's on the Corps of Engineers, that's not Nesperse County. So I want Mel's point taken.
What did, what was our grade, our rating when they just did it, in June, July?
Yeah.
Received the record there and then with the ratings.
Okay.
Regent's special came up.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that we have two competing answers from two different federations. And you would think that, okay, somebody, even if it has to go to the highest level of the present, you would make them sit down and say, okay, Gloria, you can't, you can't have conflicting mandates on local entities. But that's what they do anyway now. We're stuck, I'm sorry. I don't have an answer for that. We have to move closer to the man.
Well, you haven't had to call me since Winchester Dam isn't coming down, so that's good.
Yes, 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 yes. And the repairs that were made to Winchester Dam look to be pretty good repairs.
Oh, good.
So that's, even though in 2011, you know, it was threatening, it wasn't near what it was in nineteen ninety-six. Ninety-six, they didn't have a cement thing behind it. And so I think the mayor at that time was Gloria Fox. That was up all night in the emergency operations center, and she was up all night, right here in this building. And we were in radio contact with the dam inspector from State Parks, or something like that, where it runs Winchester. And Lewis County Sheriff and them were up there and they were just shining flashlights on the water. As long as it was clear, it was okay. But if it ever turned muddy, that meant it was eroding. And there was about a fifteen-minute time from the start of erosion till the time the whole thing blows up. So that's why we were...
I remember that.
I just wanted to hear your voice.
First of all, I said... Sure. Anything else, any other questions about hazard mitigation plan? The ultimate, what we're seeking ultimately is input from yourselves, as well as the citizens of Culbysack here, on any projects you'd like to see to reduce the damage from future disasters. And that's kind of what I'm hoping to get next to you. And if you can talk to amongst yourselves and amongst your friends and neighbors and say, hey, yeah, we haven't had a disaster since, what, ninety-six, you know, which kind of did some damage. But are there measures that you'd like to see put in place? I know, the last time I did this, five years ago, there was some interest in getting some large twenty-foot generators. And so I followed up on that and somebody said, no, we found another source for that or working on another grant for that. So we didn't need that. But if there are things that you'd like to have, please think about those and I'll be back at your next meeting, which is a Tuesday after the holiday.
Yes, at seven o'clock, yes.
Yes, to get those inputs. And to give you an idea of some of the things that we've done in the past that maybe can trigger some ideas for the future, you have inside a city hall up here, ten Kettinine gravity water filters. You do? That's true.
We do.
Okay, they set the cardboard box about yay-high. And it's gravity fed. It's, is anybody familiar with the Berkey water filter? Does that sound familiar? No, no, no? Okay. Well, Kettinine filters, it's about a five-gallon plastic tub that, then you've got another five-gallon plastic tub sitting on it. You've got filters in the top one. You can pour in like two and a half to five gallons of water on top. It goes through the filters and gets you pure water on the bottom one. Gravity fed, so it's not fast, but it is pure. So they're there, here already prepositioned in your city hall, ten of them. Each of these filters is good for like twenty thousand gallons of water.
And there's ten of them here?
Ten of them here. There are ten of them.
When we have a storage of a huge amount, what do you need the filter for? It's already, just quit pumping from underground if you start it up.
My, if I remember correctly, we were a distribution place for local residents if there was problems with the water.
Right. If you're well discontaminated, or if you have a, if you have a flood come down that takes out an old dump site or a chemical leak or something like that, you gotta be able to have good water. And in your order of preference for who gets it is basically infants, children, pregnant women, and then adults. And that's the order you can use to who should get it.
That's all of that are allowed.
That lets all of us out.
No, no, no. We also have ten of these prepositioned at PEC. PEC has used theirs because they've been able to boil water for a couple of times, a couple of incensees in the last twenty years. So they just set up all ten of them in the community hall, took water out of the Big Canyon Creek and just poured them in there, and they just run right down.
Hmm, that's cool.
You've got the same capability here. You also have a radio here, an amateur radio. You need to have an amateur radio operator work with you to set it up and also to be there when you talk on it. It's for a catastrophic type emergency or any time you would lose communications. In today's world, with cell phones and redundant communications and internet, the chances are we're not gonna need it. But just in case, just in case, in order to maintain connectivity between the city council and county, government-to-government communications for company of government, this radio sitting here, there's an antenna here. And all it takes is a grid, a battery power, any vehicle, telephone, battery, and that will work. It'll punch out fifty watts and hit a repeater at Lewiston Hill and we can talk back to you.
So that is located in the office.
So who, that's a ham radio?
Right.
So who locally is familiar with a ham radio?
I have no idea.
Probably put a request out in the next newsletter.
That would be good.
Any ham operator in the city Culbysack contact.
Yeah, for emergency.
Yeah, for emergency communications. And if you don't have one, we will find one in Lewiston and send them out to you. Okay? And the FCC says that in a life-threatening situation, you'd only have to be licensed to use it. Okay? But that, it better be life-threatening or you're violation of FCC rules. And they don't take kindly to people, are they? Because this is not, this is not a CB radio limited to five watts. This, this is a fifty-watt radio. Amateur radio operators can operate at two thousand watts and basically talk worldwide.
I was gonna say, worldwide. That goes, and you, I was gonna say, you can talk worldwide. Because I used to have an uncle that was a ham radio operator, and he could talk all over the world.
Right. You know, depends on the frequency. This particular frequency is a local frequency, only, it's live site, that is fifty watts.
If the cloud pattern's right, you can go anywhere with it.
That's, that's...
Because it'll, it'll lack a stream of water, it'll reflect.
Yeah, it's called skip.
Skip.
That's what it's called. Just like you do water, you're gonna take a, take a rock on water, but it is called skip. Your signal will hit, a cloud can bounce back down earth, it'll bounce on the ground and it may bounce out. It's called skip.
Right.
Okay, anyway, so you've got, you've got the water filters, you've got a radio and antenna. You also have twenty-five hundred sandbags. Okay? You have twenty-five hundred sandbags that we've prepositioned here and signed over to you guys. And I think, did we renew the gravel out here a couple of years ago?
How many years?
I think we did in 2011. We put some more gravel out where Herman wanted the gravel put.
The county has a big pile down here. If we had an emergency, we're gonna wire all the gravel.
Yeah, basically, so it can happen. Yeah. And that is the idea.
Yeah.
It is here for a reason. Those sandbags are here for, and they're yours. They don't belong to the county or we sign them over to the city. Culbysack, the sandbags, the radio, and those ten water filters. That's a lot of money, especially in the water filters. They belong to you. So the county's not gonna say, we need the water filters back. That's up to you. Those are your water filters to protect your citizens. They don't belong to us and the county anymore. They belong to you for your citizens, so you'll...
And during the spring, a potential flood event, you called us and, and brought us some sand out for our bags. And there was the potential of that threat.
Yeah. Yeah, I just don't know where it ended up. I think it ended up wherever Herman wanted it to go.
Yeah. So maybe where they store those supplies by the lagoon is possibly...
It could be, yeah. The important thing is that it's where you guys want, because...
For ease of access.
Yeah. And let us know if that, if that needs renewing. Okay? Not right now, but next spring when we have the threat again, because that's when we'll contact our road department, who are very good about giving over the equally sand and gravel and bringing the sand up to the others. And they brought some up to PEC as well.
We do, we do have one, and one citizen has brought this up, is there's one spot by the bridge that drops way down. If this thing ever flooded, it's all gonna run down Main Street. Is there any way to get that so that that low spot can be even with the rest of the dykes that all feed out to this one section? Who would I talk to about that?
If it's a modification, the dyke has to be the Corps of Engineers. And they will not allow any change unless they bless it.
You know, if I, next time they...
Where is this?
This is the one right on the, right up here, and it just floods right down here into the bank in Hammond's and Lane's place. And I'd say it's that far lower than the top of the dyke, right by the bridge, and it needs a wall built there or something. It's really weird the way it was set up.
I would take some pictures and send it to whoever does your inspections and say, we would like this revisited. They will not allow you to make any modifications at all.
Until they...
Please do not, or no, they actually have to do it themselves.
That's what I said, yeah, I'm sorry. I understand.
And we, now and out with the city of Lewiston, we were concerned about siltification of the rivers, the snake in the groundwater. What you do when you get siltification, those riverbeds essentially are being raised by the depth of the silt. You get three feet of silt, you essentially raise the river level by three feet. And the Corps of Engineers did not raise the Lewiston levee three more feet. So we've been identifying year after year, the levee breach potential and to encourage them to do some dredging. It's kind of like...
We're finishing game steps in the city.
Exactly. It's another one of those...
The salmon's a protective species.
Yes, yes, yes.
So's the silt that always runs down.
I just see another federal agency, a camp with salmon.
Those officials check, those are out there for I.D.L. I've seen the salmon river down there, the little Graves Creek, run black with silt because they don't put out fires in the loom areas.
Yes.
So the lower salmon in the spring run black with silt because they burn up nine acres of it.
Yes.
When you say something about that, oh, the fish people. Well, the fish people won't let you cross a river or creek or anything, put out fire. They're like, holy hell, this just doesn't make any sense. We didn't see a whole river that day. The salmon's big down there, running black.
You know, some people, what we're seeing is that...
Too many hogs of the troughs.
Yeah, we're seeing everybody with a little empire. And nobody's going to stay, take a look back and step back.
There's a river, there's a river.
It's really sad.
It is.
So that would be the best thing to do for that.
I don't have to get on that. It's been a problem for six years, I've been complaining about it.
We probably have to get the Corps of Engineers to come back and do an inspection.
What you might do in an emergency, and put this in a letter and write to them, request authorization in a flood situation to place sandbags in that lower area. And put on them to incur or deny.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'll write something up on it, at least tell them, let them know it's a problem to think about next time.
Yeah.
Maybe they'll be ahead of the curve. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We sneak out to you. Thank you very much for letting us come here and talk to you.
So your name's...
Oh, Gloria.
You spelled it M.B.L.I.
Thank you.
Bye, Mel.
Bye, Mel, thank you.
I did receive the sandbags last time he was here.
That means I've been here a long time.
Boy, you better hear a long...
I should.
I remember when Gloria was out there with the TV sessions for the flood. And we're all coming here, the dampers getting ready to break, and we're all out here.
This next deal, what, did you guys all know about this? The lawsuit, when they, that's not for us to do.
Pardon?
Say this next, next deal, we can't talk to him because of lawsuits. When are we gonna be told about that?
We can touch on that, but we can't do anything about the high pressure.
Right, that's... Right, that's, I don't think that's anything to do with him, but...
When was the council gonna be told about it? Am I the only one that doesn't know, I guess?
We have a second session tonight. We have a second session tonight where we can talk about things like that.
Okay.
Tonight, the next one is my guest, he's talking about his water leaks and water. His concerns that he brought to the budget hearing, but we said it needed to be presented at a council meeting.
So we'll hear him next.
But that has nothing to do with the other, as far as I understand.
Was the problem that occurred, that you can't talk about it, has some...
Drop something.
Okay.
Well, we'll move on to Mike now.
Hi, folks. I'll try and keep this as short as I can. We've been informed of a shutdown about seven, almost eight weeks ago and there's a lot of paint on the road and nothing's happened. And then I noticed the boys down below telling a lot of our neighbors, "We're gonna shut down, nothing's happened."
We just, I was there, by the way, with them.
Today?
Last Wednesday.
Telling people we're gonna shut the water?
We just did the four down below you for that one section.
Okay. But we were told a long time ago it was shut down.
I have no...
Okay, that was Herman and Jason, I did believe.
Oh, okay.
My question is, you see, I got water lines on both sides of my property according to their markers.
Right.
Plus, we're the highest, there's about three or four or five of us up there that are the highest point in the system. And I noticed that we've been running around stomping on little fire fixing this system, stomping on little fire fixing this leak, stomping on little fire fixing that leak. You can't get good pressures down here unless you start at the top. I'm not saying that because I live at the top, it's just the fat hydraulics.
Right, that's why we're starting at the top with sections to do our pressure checks.
Well, I know three, three and four incidents down here already that where they're fixing stuff, but they don't know the pressures.
Well, that's an emergency because they're leaking. They can't, they got...
When an emergency occurs, it's fixed.
Well, I wanted to quit an emergency for my property then.
Right, and there are...
I have sinkholes that keep coming and keep coming and keep coming and keep coming. I had a little backhoe up there to build a little pad for my twenty-five foot camper trailer. On the lower end of my property, dig down that far. And the dirt is, it's harder than rock on top because it's dry. The dirt below it, about four or five inches down, is saturated, totally saturated now.
Well, that's what we understand, yeah.
Okay, and I've talked to other neighbors, that whole hill's creeping. My concern that I wanna explain here to my trusted servants is if it's drifting that much, what's it gonna do to my sewer connections and my water line connections?
That's what we're worrying about. I was up there looking at that back one that drops up to the old Cadell place, that big crack in the dirt.
Yeah.
They showed me all, I just...
See, that's my shop right above it.
Right.
When I put that addition on, the county inspector and I, we didn't know exactly where the property line was because of lax surveys. So there's two steel stakes there that have to be about yea far from the pin. So what the county inspector and I did between Wright's property and Ernie's Cadell property, we pulled the line all the way through those two stakes, put a pin there. And then as a safety valve, we moved the shop instead of five foot from the property line, the closest corner of the shop was seven foot from that string line, hoping we didn't infringe on Ernie. And Ernie was there when we, when we did this. We got that bank's in serious business.
It is, but...
But you don't see water leak, see? And my concern is it's, it's so saturated, it's running subsurface, really deep. I put in, you've seen, you know, since people told me my retaining walls look really good, the water's running way below and my shit is sinking again. I'm awful concerned that the wife and I, we're like the town.
Yeah.
I've been over here for a lot of years. I moved to town a few years ago because I just didn't wanna live out. I'm awful concerned what's happening to my property.
Well, I'm, I am too. That's why I'm volunteering to get in, excuse me, I'm the man in the middle of this. I volunteered, the mayor gave me permission to consider, I'm going out there with these guys. They said, "We got to get through the whole city, starting at the top, your priority, and go valve to valve."
I understand you don't know where the valves are.
We, we found them, the ones down below you. That's the section between Cadell's, we went just past your place and got down to Third House Down. There's a valve, down by the, almost just up that side of the mayor, ex-mayor's place. And we got that section super fifteen minutes, about one pound of dropage. Then we were gonna do your section. And then we couldn't complete it, so we were doing the four houses. You weren't home at the time. We gave, so we left a note and, but we, and everybody else was informed for the next section, which is that area you're in. Doesn't go all the way up to the tank, but it's up to where it shuts you off. And so my goal is to go through the whole system, because we gotta go through the whole system first. And just valve to valve. And once we do that, if we got a bad valve, we can't shut off, we just go to the next valve. That's the problem we ran in. So that's why all the people want, pulled lodge pole. We told them we were gonna shut it off. And then we had to just turn it back on because we couldn't test it. Because that valve would not shut on the lower end of that section. So what we gotta do is a section at a time. And if you wanna, I was gonna go over and talk to you. I saw you there earlier today and when you got back, you worked home and we got up to your place. So I'm doing this one day a week. I'm hoping to, the mayor's giving me permission. We'll figure out, we gotta do this a couple of days a week and get this done before winter hits.
Yeah.
And you're, you're the top end of it. So is that, is that reasonable if we, if you wanna pull, see us around and... So that's what I'm doing. And we're, we're marketed on the maps, we found valves, we didn't know where they were, they were eighteen inches...
Do you have gate valves or shut-off valves?
Uh, I don't know.
See, my, my understanding is, and believe me, I know valves are very expensive.
Well, we just bought five or six of them, so...
They're pretty expensive, you know? My fear is, my fear is it's the well. And I mentioned last time that when I watched them replacing casings, I watched that.
Uh-huh, it's going this way when it's going down.
Well, yeah, he couldn't, he couldn't run a straight line to hook up with it.
But the casing would have to be solid to come up.
Well, usually what they do is they run a casing and then put the piping in on a system this large. On a smaller home, they'll put a casing in and just drop the pump.
Correct.
But on a large system, I imagine that's gotta be at least a ten or twelve inch pipe at the bottom of that well. I would do my guess just for pure volume.
I have no idea.
Well, what I have on the open, the aqua, they well each one of that pipes together. So that was the seal unit from the top of the ground to the bottom of the pond. And they were trying to thread this piping and...
So you're saying you think our well is leaking?
Well, what I'm finding from my neighbors and stuff is the whole hillside's totally saturated. I talked to one neighbor whose sprinkler system, he put in underground sprinkler system, probably sixteen, eighteen, eighteen inches deep for frost. And it's already ruined, and that was five or six years ago. And it's just this creep that I'm talking about.
Yeah.
And it's because of the equipment.
How can we check that?
Maybe we have to bring in the, who is the, was that UNCON that did that?
Well, I think...
UNCON that did the new pump when they put it in?
Oh, I'm not sure, I could check the records, but I have some...
But I, if it could be the tank, we're gonna have the tank inspected. See if there's any clean coming out of the bottom of that.
Expecting it soon.
Soon.
My major concern, I'll tell you all, is my foundation's finally cracked on both ends of my house. Okay, forty feet apart. If you pull from the southeast corner or from the northwest corner back and you go to the southwest corner back, within a foot, my foundation's cracked clear down on both spots, they couldn't foot each other. Which tells me, the only way I know how to fix that as a professional is pin pile of mud jack. But I've looked at a lot of foundations, they're designed for groundwater to run underneath them. So if it's dragging subsurface and creating void, I couldn't mud jack because water's supposed to run underneath the slab, or so to speak, you see? And this is my big concern is, is, that's my retirement home, it's paid for.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I'm doing everything I can personally to stop it, but it's just too deep.
Yeah, and, and, and on the other end of it, we can't say it's our fault until we see it. That hill, there's, you get up on top of Mattson, there's a big pond up there next to Spencer Place and it's always filled with water. And I say, "Where's this water coming from?" There's only fifty feet of hill above it and that thing is always saturated, so...
Mattson put that well in.
But that's seeping that pond.
Yeah, but he also put that well in.
Yeah.
Did he also build the infrastructure here in town?
What well?
The new well.
Mattson did use it?
Yeah, Mattson put that in.
You mean up at the old house up on Mattson Road?
No, I mean, the, the tank up there that says the well, the tank up there that says wolves.
All that.
Mattson and five of his buddies over all that land up there, they sold it, developed it, and they gave it to us, the city.
Maybe they gave us...
Yes, and they can't even find an asphalt on their system.
I thought we weren't even using that one yet.
That's why I just said, "I don't think we're using it." That one's empty, it's not being used.
I don't use it.
The top well, the very top well.
Yeah, the very top one?
Very top well.
Yeah, that...
Mattson built that.
Yeah, Mattson was the developer that did that whole thing.
It wasn't sitting for years.
No, and here, here's the deal, Mattson was not a licensed developer, okay? So they put in the water system and hand it over to the city. Now, no one can find any maintenance records. Now, by law, if it's a bitter design, they have to hand an asphalt of every, every valve in that system to hand over to you guys to maintain, us the city, to maintain that. There is not one. It was a good old boy network.
Yeah.
Okay, just like a lot of other good old boy networks. The problem is, I'm so heavily invested that I wouldn't really, you know, I'm not angry at anybody, I'm frightened.
Yeah.
And when I get frightened, I might get a little angry, huh? You know, we got a serious problem.
Right, yeah.
Now, one thing I do know, and I don't wanna go there, they can play the, Nethersford County and the powers that be and the city can powers that be and do anything they want. Judge is gonna give a damn about the, the good old boy system. But we, with that hill, whether it's his pond or that, that well, that whole hill's not my property. People belong in your screen bloody murder. People decide in your screen bloody murder. I'm not trying to stir up everything, I'm just trying to find out if I'm the only property that's got a water running underneath it. Because I ought to prove I got water underneath mine big time.
Yeah. Well, we don't know yet, so let's, we, all we can do is progress. We, this has been a long time. Should've been done ten years ago.
Ten or fifteen.
I don't know, I don't know how long it's been the next, probably that long, no?
Um, I wanna say seventy-six or seventy-nine, I can't remember. And I got from the old boys, what happened when I put my addition on, I hit the phone lines. And the man that came out to fix it had been fixing phone lines and putting and sit the infrastructure around here forever. And he's the one that started telling me, "Well, we don't know exactly where everything is, but our phone won't work." And he says, "Never could, no one could ever figure it out." Then I bought gravel and I hear from one of the truck drivers that's been there forever, exactly what went on in that whole hillside. Because he's, he's always hauled me gravel now where I live. I used to live over on Cottonwood Creek. And I moved, I moved to town. But he says, "Oh, no, this happened up there." I say, "You sure?" He says, "Hey." He told me, I was really curious to go down at the county records and find out what happened to the grant for the sewer and water about fifteen years ago. Because that was kind of a welfare grant.
But I haven't more than fifteen, our water was thirty years ago.
We didn't pass. Now, I got another question.
Are you speaking of that development or the city as a whole?
This, well, he just said if you really wanna find out what's going on with the water system, go back there and see where the problems started. I don't believe, and I wished he was here tonight, I don't believe Herman knows what the hell he's doing. We're supposed to have a filter system up there that's maintainable and checked. And I got a report here, I'd like to see the documentation. Herman says we passed. My wife and I and our neighbors and everything else, you can't even stand putting your nose in your washer. You gotta leave it open all the time, it stinks to bad.
Really?
Really, and if you leave water sitting in a sink, you know, like you're gonna watch a TV show and you're soaking your dishes, it stinks. So I took the jar down, I took my quart jar down and had it tested and it failed, our tap water failed for human consumption.
When did you do that? When?
About three weeks ago.
Did you really?
Yes, and we asked Herman about the smell in the, in the smell in the washer and dryer. We got a smart ass remark. And I think what's going on, I'm just telling you the truth, I was here. He runs around this town stoned on his ass. He loves to mow yards and he likes doing this and that, but he don't give you the time of day up there. I don't think he knows what he's doing and I don't like a trusted servant. And I'm saying this to you folks, I'm not saying this around town. I'm not that kind of man.
Thank you, yeah.
I'm not stirring up trouble. I'm very frightened about my property. And I wouldn't chair this community apart, that's not the type of man I am. But I don't think he doesn't know what he's doing. And I've been, I've been under, I'd like to tell him to his face, he doesn't know what he's doing.
All right, but we are in a public agreement.
Yes, I know.
Things can't be complained about in a public agreement, unfortunately.
Yeah.
I agree, I apologize.
You got a backhoe up there?
Yeah, I do.
No, I don't now. I took it up to scrape, I put in these block walls. And the best way for me as old as I am is to get one of those little landscaper track holes and scrape me a nice long flange and I put it in gravel so that I can level the rocks easier. Now, I did take that backhoe, again, because I'm trying to protect the property, and you'll see it if you're up there. I took the front blade of that and cut me a little erosion ditch at the side of the road. I've been doing it by hand. And then after big rains, because I don't want the water coming in and running down the driveway, I've been doing it by hand, I had that hole, I did just dress it up. You may see that mark up there. But I didn't tear up the road, I just cut my own little ditch, but I've been doing it by shovel and rake ever since I moved up there. And I apologize, I don't mean to, I'm not a rude man, I apologize.
Well, we, we recognize that with your comments, the approach to this.
All we can say is we're working on it.
We are working on it.
That is our priority. It's fine if we got leaks and if we got them, we're gonna fix them.
Oh, last, last meeting I was in, we talked about a telescope or a imager that was offered to use by another town, an underground imager.
Well, there's the steposcope sound one, which will get us within five feet once we get between, but we gotta get it narrowed down. And then we're gonna bring the equipment in and narrow it down once we get the sections. We can't do the whole town here.
No, I didn't think, I learned if they did it block by block.
Well, we're doing, I just got it going. And I've got a bed on top of it and I will work at it and then I'll keep you informed. When we get through, our priority is up in your section, because we gotta start at the top anyway. And I will, because if we could, once we get her, the leaks are down, throughout the system are minor. Once, once we know that they add up and then they're major. So once we get through the system, we can say we got a potential in this section, this section, this and this. Then we can bring in that, either the collator or the sound equipment from Lewiston. And they said they can get us within five feet. We dig it up, we fix it. Well, we need to, in the dry sections, we just drive by. So we'll, that's where we're at. And we'll get to as good as we can on that, okay?
I appreciate it.
And we did put some money in there for it, as we showed you in the budget.
Yeah, I, I noticed in the budget when I was over here, there's, there's money in there. I, I appreciate your efforts.
Okay. Well, thanks for the input on that, what, what you've come up with.
Well, that's why I wouldn't mind seeing the recording on the clean, healthy water. They say, they say it was recorded, uh, July was clean, healthy water, well, in August back, mine failed. staff, mine failed. So is there real documentation, or is it just word? Because I got documentation of the chemical break down.
Well.
What was in there? What the, what the?
Chlorine, sulfur, and si, calcium cyanide, or calcium nitrate or something like that. The chlorine levels were way, way high, the sulfur content was way high. You know all these rocks around town that are white?
Yeah.
That's what's inside our pipes, that's what's inside our, our house pipes, that's what's inside our hot water tanks. And it just keeps building and building. You need a special, not special, you need a filtering system that's maintained well enough to clean that out. Um, I know we have a filtering system up there, I just question whether it's maintained properly like our sewer.
I, yeah.
Okay, I'll let you guys go.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for yours.
All right, so on to.
Community Center, Timlin Fire Department roof leaks.
I wish, I wish. But first on new business, on my graves was B on the new business. And I can go through the next three things on new business pretty quickly. After the last council meeting where we lost power, and it was pretty dark in here, and it wasn't even winter, the mayor asked that, um, office staff would check on emergency lighting for a public building. And, um, we've been investigating that, um, exit signs, and also trying to get quote on just lights only, had the exit sign over the doorways exiting the building, and then at the end of the hall, just lights shining out. So when we lose power, if we have like a public event here, which would be more than what we had with the few people and, and the public meeting, that we're in defiance and have safety in the building. We haven't got very far with some of the other priorities that have come up with the budget and the building, the.
According to federal law, we, we should have those.
Would that be like a generator?
No, it's just batteries. Emergents and lighting, if the power goes off, these lights come on.
Oh, okay.
And they're self-charging.
Exits are, and.
Most of them are good for just thirty minutes, but enough with people out, the batteries.
Right. You know, and, and here's, um, Carol did some research, she has some pictures of what the exit lights would look like, and she was getting a quote for approximately like thirty-five dollars each.
We've got it at the school and the church.
Yeah. And it, it doesn't look like it would be.
No, it was something that we should've done.
Yeah.
It should've been, it should've been put in when the building was built.
Oh, yeah, that was a long time ago.
That was probably back before they didn't require something like that, but we're working on, on, on getting that put together, we don't have.
In the last thirty, forty years, they should've had it in.
And so in the meantime, you know, we carry a flashlight in our pocket.
It was surprising, it went out at the gym one year, and you would be surprised how many people had a flashlight.
Lights in their pockets.
Really?
Oh, I mean, cell phones.
That's, that, and that's when the school put them in. It happened at a bar game.
Yeah. It can be dark in there.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, it was right, all of our cell phones now.
And it's not all of them, not my cheap one, or does it? I don't even know it.
Yeah, the cell phones, yeah. Okay. So, and that, so we'll continue to work on that while we put together a package, um, well, um, let you know, or if you just want us to go ahead and, and get going.
Yeah.
I think, I think you probably should just go ahead and, when you get the best price, go ahead and order them.
Does someone want to make a motion, and we'll just?
AI move that, uh, we go ahead and get emergency lighting set up in City Hall.
We'd probably need one, two, three, four.
Yeah, we figured, we calculated four, and then the.
Four exits.
The lights in the middle of the hallway directing shining down.
Second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, you saw in your packet that I, um, visited the Herco Bridge because of the problems that we had. And in, um, talking with the contacts, I had a report in, um, your package. Um, Carol, um, contacted, um, Herco and actually talked to, um, one of the owners. And in their research, they, um, saw the email that I included in your packet that Sharon had sent to them from Kathleen Slender, the Idaho Transportation Department Bridge Asset Management Engineer, and, um, signed up on the process for repairing the, um, Herco Bridge and extending more life. I did notice that the copies that we had printed and made for you had, um, part of the voice cut off, so we printed new ones. And this is the, um, email that Herco followed to a T, with the engineer at the Idaho Department of Transportation.
Well, they might've done that, but we got a bad bridge.
So, you know, we have a bad bridge, they went with them, but it's looking at, they followed what the ITD stated was the way to do it, that we're probably not looking at a warranty thing.
Yeah.
Um, that we'll probably need to start, um, we'll probably need to do the repairs as the city. I don't know if we want to go to ITD, we start with Herco.
Did they go more than an inch and a half? Did they put three on it?
She said they followed those instructions to a T. They didn't wait for that at all.
Several times, she said, several times she said that.
My gut feeling is not to deal with Herco, if they did a job and they didn't, it's substandard.
At least they come out.
We talked about it, didn't we? We had another bid, didn't we? And we went with them, because we had them before.
Um, yeah, I think the other bid was Poe Asphalt, then we're hearing the file, and we went with them.
I think, was this the one that did the under lane, the other didn't want to?
Uh, the whole one, going to put the plywood down, this outfit figured that the plywood would solve all the problems.
Which.
And it possibly would've if they'd have put some metal mesh.
Yeah.
Something to grip it on.
Because when those trucks are coming down that hill, and it's hot, they hit their brakes, and.
And it's the same situation the sheriff was talking about, why they lowered the speed limit.
Because the big trucks to wait, everything else.
And it could be our little engineer at the state doesn't know what she's doing.
Didn't realize the situation.
And, uh, didn't mention the mesh, I remember a mesh being pretty.
Well, we're not gonna do anything this year.
We're not gonna do anything.
No, it's over.
It's over.
But we need, we got all winter to decide.
We're gonna have to do something with this.
Let's do a quick patch. Get something in there and just try to get the hump out of it and fill that dip. That shouldn't be too expensive.
Who would we get to do a quick patch?
I don't know. I imagine it has to be Poe, or, or even just a small little.
Herman and Jason can't do it, just like these little ones they do around here?
I would chip it out, and, well, you gotta do a hot on that, you can never do a cold patch that'd come out in an hour.
Their schedule is, the priority is the water.
Yeah.
True.
Yeah, so.
So let's, just, could, uh.
Would you want to call in Herco and pay them to chip it out and put it?
Just fill the gap, just temporary.
To fill the gap to get us through to next spring?
I have sound, or the other company, but Poe doesn't usually do that small.
I wonder if Sally's gonna do it, this late. They said it's supposed to be eight each next week. Who knows if we can.
Well, that's the, all they'd have to do is one lane, downhill lane.
Right.
Cut that out and.
Fill the dip and cut the chunk out.
I, I think if nothing else, if you just put some splats across there, but some of that metal mesh.
Yeah.
And then put, uh, light asphalt over that, because that mesh would, if it's anchored right, it would stop and move.
We could ask them about that, you know, mesh. Who would, uh, who got for engineering this? Just suggest putting a little bit of a, a metal mesh and just fill the dip and cut the bump out, then level it off, very small job.
Two or three thousand bucks.
Only a couple hundred thousand dollars. It shouldn't be that much. The problem is that, you know, the Herco.
By the time they, they'd have to remove the surface.
Yeah.
And lay it.
I think we should just leave it.
Is it dangerous?
Well, it, it moved to the point where it's pretty deep right now, it's just that.
I know she's got a sign there, yeah.
Yeah.
If someone wrecks, are we responsible?
We're getting into an area that, like Joanne said, temperature too.
Yeah.
Yeah, temperature.
And just do it.
Longer we put it off, colder it's gonna get.
Yeah.
And I don't know, does it have to be a certain temperature before they can do that?
Seventy, I think.
Well, they got hot packs, they do it in the winter when they were doing the bridges.
Right, and the bridge was done with hot packs.
Maybe, maybe we can get a hold of Herco here and see if they would give us a bid on it.
Yeah.
If, if they, they should give us a break on it, being.
Yeah.
Being their job didn't hold.
Sure.
Yeah. And then if we.
I wouldn't count on that. No, bottom line.
Just tell them to make a, just to make it safer for the winter. If people come down there a little ice, and they get a bump, it's gonna throw them up and throw them into a spin. So we need to make it safer for winter, level it out, even if it's a cold patch.
Yeah, just call them and see if they'll give us a bid.
Okay.
It has to be done.
Yeah.
But that's the thing, if you get a bid, and we're putting it off till next month's meeting, then it's colder yet. So does she just need to go ahead and get it done, no matter what the weather is?
We can't wait another minute.
We can't, no, because we're gonna get too cold. I mean, get a bid and then give us all a call.
We'd do a consensus vote on it, is that reasonable? We just call everybody, say yes, even if it's three thousand bucks.
With a.
We got rolling on it.
I move that we contact Herco and get the repair done on Third Street Bridge as soon as possible. And you can clean that up and add whatever you need to do to it.
And, um.
Mr. Sack?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most in carry.
So this is on the bridge.
Man, that's delicious.
Oh, I thought they were terrible.
No, they're not.
Hope nobody's allergic to peanut butter.
Oh, they're good.
Oh.
They're tasty.
See, that's.
I'm surprised it was so pasty. I mean, so peanut butter, peanut butter.
There's peanuts in it with the chocolate, and in the top has peanut butter, uh, butter and powdered sugar.
You want it October what?
It's time for the fall cleanup, and to get a couple dumpsters in again. I noticed that last year it was on the first Saturday. Um, I think it was Joanne, or, you know, someone reminded me about that, and I, I tried to make a jump up.
Uh, the tenth and eleventh is Thanksgiving?
No. Not, well.
Day, oh, Canada.
In Canada.
Never mind.
That's why we're not having ours.
You want my glasses?
No, you want to read it, Thanksgiving Day.
And what else? Why, why holidays are for us?
It's Columbus Day.
Columbus Day.
So, but the fourth is the first Saturday, I think, and last year, is that correct?
Yes, yeah. I move we have it the fourth. Fall cleanup.
What if our citizens are celebrating Yom Kippur?
I'll second.
Yom Kippur? All in favor?
Aye.
Most in carry.
Oh, God, we have a bunch of crap here, don't we?
Yeah, and it's nine o'clock.
And we have an expected Saturday.
I'm glad the sheriff was here, but it took a lot of time, we should all catch up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, yeah. Okay, um, I'll give you the status on the vacation in Red Rose Street. We have a recommendation of a, um, company from, um, our city attorney. And we'll, um, have him come out with the lawyer and look at what is needed in the area so that they can be on the ground together and get an estimate, and then I can bring the estimate to you at the next meeting for approval.
Wow, another month now? Maybe that's why they started.
Maybe this is why Dell's Johnny and Mary Kay started, because I, Dave's retiring in December.
Yeah.
And I think that things are in the works that.
Well, Johnny's ready to retire.
He's been ready to retire. So they're trying to get things straightened up.
Quite sure, you know, what's happened.
Yeah.
I just have found that, um, to do things, and when you have as many things as, has been coming to the city, that it just all has a process and takes its time.
Yeah, and if you go back, if you go look at the stake at the back of their building, it's, you know, the corner is here, and the stake is in here, where the gym community has put one of their sheds, that, the one that's painted blue, well, it's right at the edge of the stake. So that much of their building is.
Actually, the blue building, not the red one.
The blue one.
My God, that's been there a hundred years, that's the old concrete.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, maybe it is the red one, maybe it is the red one. It's, whatever, their building, there's a corner here, and there's a stake, and there's a gym community building, there's, and the stake is behind one of the buildings, the first one, whatever the first one back that way is.
Yeah, the old one used to be the old telephone.
Okay, I don't, I don't know, I went and looked at it.
So what, what we gotta do here?
We just gotta wait, we gotta wait until the mayor, not the mayor, it's the city attorney and the survey company.
The office will be contacting Cuddy, Cuddy and Associates, the recommended survey company, and coordinating to have them come out with our city attorney on the situation. Okay?
I thought it's gonna get us through tonight, it's gonna.
And evidently on the next one, Mr. and Mrs. Adams aren't here.
Right, um.
But they signed it, right?
Did they sign though?
They've not been notaried yet. Donna Adams called today, um, we delivered it, um, August fourth, and I talked to Donna, and, um, she knew that Larry couldn't be at this meeting, but because he was gonna be out of town, but she thought maybe they'd get it signed in time, but she called this morning and said they did not get it signed and notarized yet.
So we can't approve it till?
You can't adopt the resolution until that's signed, and, um.
I think they went fishing.
I think they went, I know they went fishing.
Tony's back, so.
Okay, so that's the status now.
Well, guess we won't get the fence in before winter.
Oh, yeah, we'll get it in.
Oh, they can probably do it in a week, okay.
Okay, so we're down to the roof leak and mold issue bill.
We're leaving it on the agenda, and no report.
And the, I went and looked at.
Oh, did you? I keep thinking I'm going to.
No, and all, they, they haven't done anything. The only thing is that the thing is there, say, this is the, you know, the phone tank, and there's an orange hole here. And I think, I didn't even get out to look at it, it's got an orange hole.
Plastic piece of crap.
It is plastic. It's plastic.
And that is.
And that won't work.
Right, that is why at the beginning of summer, we called and asked for something more.
The concrete, I mean, the big, like.
And then they were gonna put steel buried.
No, they haven't done it, I went and looked.
I did.
The office will call and follow up on that because it's the end of summer.
Nothing with the trailer port?
I think the sheriff made an amendment.
That's why I'm chuckling.
Not, not just us.
Nope, not just us.
Okay, I move we go into executive session, six, seven, two, three, four, five.
I'll second, and you have to poll us.
Um, you need to request a roll call vote on your motion.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I do.
And we're not taking.
I agree, I do.
Before going in, um, okay, I'll do the roll call and then I can turn off the, um, the fire. Um, Catherine Bollmar.
Yes.
Phil Schreiber.
Yes.
Joanne Shetzel, we have a call, we're going into, um, executive session, let me.
Turn off.
We're recording.
Okay, meeting back in session.
Nine fifty-five.
Nine fifty.
Almost as bad as schoolwork.
Okay, um.
You want the mayor to tell him? We're gonna have a special meeting on Tuesday, September sixteenth at one P M.
With Jacey.
For an executive session.
With, yeah, an executive session meeting on, yeah, okay?
All I gotta say.
Meeting's adjourned.
Meeting's adjourned.
Sorry, I took your.